I think you just have to pull.
No, no, it does turn.
I came in that way. Every other time.
I got this and I just turned it and it all.
I think it's. It is true.
I turned this funny thing at the top of the handle when I came in. Was that the mark?
They're toying with us.
Hey, how's it going?
Hey, how are you? You got my coat on.
Thank you. Yes. My little gift's over here.
Like to call this meeting to order? Tri-Town Meeting, Wednesday, September 6, 2017, at 7:00. Welcome, everybody. We've been on hiatus, I think, since April. So we have a short, just have two agenda items. But before that, should we do introductions for everybody at home?
I'm Don Long, the Bolton Town Administrator.
I'm Jonathan Keep, Selectman for the Town of Bolton.
I'm Stiat Sarah, Selectman Lancaster Chair.
Walter Sandrowski, Lancaster Selectman.
Don Harkstow, Selectman.
Are we gonna go around the room? Brooklyn Super Ten of Schools. Lorraine Remasco, Bolton School Committee.
Okay, Cody Ann Lancaster, Rep. to the school committee.
Steve Rubenstein, Stowe Rep. to the school committee.
Neil Darcy, Bolton Rep. for school committee.
Julia North, Stowe Rep. for the Art and Library.
Ryan Boyle, Bolton Advisory Committee.
And Kesher, Bolton Advisory Committee.
And Neil of the Stone Bolton Department.
Welcome. So the first item is a discussion about Lancaster and Stowe sharing liability related to the SRO. So I put this on the agenda. And the Student Resource Officer is kind of a new position, a newer position. And I feel like it's, you know, we're learning things and developing it over time. And I guess what I wanted to discuss is kind of updating the agreement the three towns have to share the costs related to this School Resource Officer, specifically related to, you know, potential liability and, you know, legal defense related to lawsuits. So we have a million dollars in insurance for, you know, situations, you know, like lawsuits. That's what Don has told me. But then anything beyond that would not be covered. And then, then there's the issue, you know, I think, I don't know if you're experiencing this, but our expenses for town council have, I think they've been, they've definitely gone up this last year. And so there's definitely a concern about, you know, potential lawsuits and the expense of defending them.
How does that pertain to the first item? The expense on legal, is it legal, associated with the school?
Yeah, would be, you know, if we had, because the School Resource Officer is hired by the Town of Bolton, you know, if there were, if there were an incident, you know, use of force incident, and, you know, the student's family decided to sue, you know, we would, you know, the town would have to defend itself. So it's, so it's sharing the cost related to that defense.
So this is potential, not existing?
It's potential.
I thought I heard.
Yeah, it's potential.
Just to be clear, Stan, that we did have extraordinarily high legal expense in our FY '17 legal budget, but none of it was pertaining to the SRO.
I was just trying to find out how they mesh. Apparently they don't. But we unfortunately have the same disease as well with expenses on, beyond. But we had three unions to negotiate with too, which didn't help the process work that third year loop. So that's also part of the.
What are you suggesting? Do you have any specific numbers or proposal or how this might be done?
What have you done with that?
Inter municipal agreement or what? Well, we already have an agreement. And so we'll be updating it to take into account these, you know, potential expenses if we add. Stan, just ask, what agreement are you referring to? I'm assuming that we have an agreement about how the School Resource Officer is paid for by the three towns.
We do. I mean, it's paid for through the assessment. The school district covers roughly half of the expense. Half of the 180 days worth of labor and then whatever percentage of fringe is appropriate to that. And then, and of course, that in turn gets passed out through allocations, just as anything does from the school district. And then Bolton bears the expense of the other half because when school's not in session, we use the officer who was the School Resource Officer in other ways.
This is a Bolton Police Officer that's the SRO, correct?
Yes. I think that's part of the state statute.
From what I understand, he's already covered by insurance provided by a federal liability and.
Yeah, he's covered up to a million dollars.
But I mean, no matter where he is, he can be on the road, get a ticket, or he could be working.
Right, but it would be lawsuits related to the specific function of the School Resource Officer. I think we would want, you know, to share those costs. So that's, that is the concern. So is, there isn't an agreement?
There is an agreement with the school district about the absorption of those costs. But as far as what you're talking about, you know, liability over a million dollars, there is no agreement anywhere that deals with that.
So, yeah.
But as far as the allocation of the expense, there is an agreement.
Has there been any investigation of the expense going beyond a million? And I don't know what's enough, but I.
Well, there, you know, there are a lot of, I think most of the settlements are made out of court because I can't find any, you know, any money amounts. But if you go online, there are a lot of newspaper articles about these type of lawsuits. So it just seems.
Can we just clarify one thing? That we have not had those incidents at the high school. Because I don't want people to get the wrong impression that we have those incidents at the high school. And we haven't. And I think what you're referencing is other districts and what they've seen. Is that right?
Yeah, other districts have had lawsuits. We don't currently have one.
Nor have we in recent past until at least in my tenure. So thank you.
Never.
We've never. Thank you. Just want to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
So if the salary's already taken care of, you'd just be looking at increasing the limits of liability and getting that shared? Is that what I'm trying to say? No, it would just be an agreement that if, if there's a lawsuit related to the School Resource Officer and the court, you know, deliver, you know, delivers a verdict that, you know, fines the town over the million dollars, that that would be shared. And also, as part of that, there would be a legal defense and that that would be shared in thirds. Would it go back to an inter municipal agreement? Is that the only way to do something like this?
I would presume it would be an IMF.
Would not, one of the first things to look at if we're concerned about the amount of coverage for liability on the effect, we'll hope for a policy that increases that? Rather than worry about after a million and then we all dip in our pockets one third and, right? I don't know, I just thought, it's never happened. I mean, we're talking, it could, it proposed, possibilities, potential, I guess it's a better word. So why wouldn't we investigate additional coverages if it's concerned? Are we in line with the rest of the schools in the Commonwealth in terms of liability coverage? I don't know. These are all questions I don't have answers to. How do we discern that? As we talk to our insurers and they should hopefully have the expertise to know that a million should cover it. But maybe two million will be a very small premium. I don't know if it's needed. But I think input, further input would be helpful in making a decision. I don't see us, my town agreeing, our board agreeing, that we open up the door and just say, whatever happens over a million dollars, we divide by three. I just don't see that as being a realistic approach to, as I see this, potential.
I think we've had previous tri-town discussions where the boards of selectmen have said that the School Resource Officer was important and that if there were concerns about these types of liabilities, that, you know, some, some selectmen said that, you know, they felt that it was important to share in those. So, you know, the state statute says that, you know, the town that the high school is in needs to, you know, the School Resource Officer needs to come from that police department. So that's how we find ourselves in this situation. You know, this is, this is just planning ahead so that we're all protected and we're all, you know, supporting this, this position equally. But, you know, I'm open to every, you know, looking into, I mean, I don't think it's the school insurance. I think it's the, you know, it's our insurance for, specifically for the police department? Or is it the whole?
It's police officer liability. It's lying within, it's a piece of coverage within our town insurance.
That billion dollars is the same for any officer in town?
Yes.
So, maybe, maybe, well, first off, has your board taken a position on this or is this just your individual item at this point? Well, this, this has come up at previous tri-town meetings. That's not what I'm asking. I said, has your board of selectmen taken a position on this issue? Previously, we have raised this as a concern. Raising it as a concern and taking a vote to do something about it. In my town, it's something different, which is it? Well, so this is the beginning of the discussion. We can vote on it, we can vote on it as a board of selectmen at another time. But this is just kicking off the discussion about these two issues. And, yeah, I'm not sure why it's, you know, you're sharing in, in the salary, why you wouldn't share in any potential liabilities. I'm not prejudging it. I'm just saying, I don't, it's like trying to bite fog. There's nothing I can get my teeth into with what you're suggesting here. If you said, we've looked into this and for X thousand dollars, we could buy more insurance and the board is taking, we would like each of the three boards to go back and do it. I think that's what I would see coming out of an action item here. Yeah, I mean, that, that would be, yeah, the three towns working together towards that. That's what I'm proposing.
I just think we need more information, you know, and I agree, I think I may have mentioned earlier, is what Don just expressed about finding out what's the additional cost for liabilities. And more importantly, find out what other towns, what other districts have in similar circumstances. There's gotta be some standards out there.
We can do, I mean, my office can do that.
I think gather info and please provide it our next meeting. Unless you can get it done now.
Let me check.
All right. No, I think that's.
I was just looking to ask if I can ask it's a district-related question. So if, if, if the insurance is going to be paid, it seems that it would be through the inter-town agreements and then that would be done through assessment, but then with them through the school district. Whereas we pay a portion of the officer, that would be a portion that we would increase for the insurance payment. And I'm just wondering, that's where I'm formulating this question. So I'm just wondering why there would be the belief that use of force lawsuit would be any greater or any greater need with the high school versus anywhere else in town that it takes place?
Well, the officers, when they're on duty, stopping cars, they're working solely for the Town of Bolton.
Sure, but there's.
The School Resource Officer is working for three towns when they're at the school.
Sure, but we have a million dollars, so it's not that we're being asked to split the million dollars three ways or through this part of the school district and part of the town. It's being a million dollars and then going beyond that in case there's more money that's being asked for. But that same criteria is not being applied to the rest of the town itself. And I'm just finding that to be, you know, and I'm being defensive of the school district. But it just seems like there's some sort of extraordinary reason why there'd be the assumption that lawsuits would be much more higher if it comes to the school district than somebody who is being sued for use of force during a traffic stop for the town.
Yeah, so it's definitely worth looking into the, the amount of coverage we have related to other towns. But again, where the School Resource Officer is different is this is a shared, a shared position. Whereas, you know, our police departments do interact, but that's, you know, that's less of a, that's not a shared position. And, you know, Don told me that, you know, this, the School Resource Officer doesn't cost us anymore in terms of our insurance, that it's just kind of a blanket coverage for the whole department. So, so we're not asking, asking for any money related to the insurance of that specific officer because it's for the whole department.
And Neil, if I may, just procedurally, an inter municipal agreement wouldn't have anything to do with the district. It would be, if there were one, it would be signed by the three towns and any money changing hands would transfer between the towns. It would not flow through the district nor would it hit the assessment.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's good.
Great. So we'll work on getting more information about insurance costs. But in terms of, was there information you wanted about, you know, legal defense? Just, you don't worry about limiting exposure of Bolton appropriately. As a representative of Stowe, my board would want to say, well, what are we being asked to assume as a portion of, of what? It's just a number X. What's the number? So I think until we have something specific, it's premature to debate it much.
I'll ask our insurer for what the exponential, no, not exponential, the additional cost would be of two million dollars in coverage and five million dollars in coverage.
I can't believe it's gonna be much. It's like when you buy a homeowner's and you get an umbrella policy, that's the smallest penny of insurance bill.
And will they allow you, because you're only in our school for 180 days, so are you gonna pay the additional coverage for the full year? Or are you gonna pay just for 180 days the school's in session? Will they allow you to do that? I mean, there's a lot of questions there.
But the amount would be so minimal that it may not be a big issue. Will you pay fifty or?
If they, yeah.
And I don't see them saying, okay, it's on, now it's off, it's on, it's off. How about the states are not in school? Want to factor those into? It's interesting.
It's that legal forensic fight, say it's de minimis.
De minimis, yeah. You don't have.
Well, it's your decision, so yeah, I'll just go ahead and do what you have to do.
No, it's our decision. It's more town meetings.
Not my decision.
No, we're all conjecturing, so we need some hard data to make decisions like that.
And we'll try to investigate more approach that the towns have taken.
Please, yeah, it could be helpful.
Great. Thank you, Don. So the next is the tri-town meeting locations. That's Lorraine.
Thank you. I did ask to have that put on the agenda and the reason that I asked is, tri-town, although it started way before our time, was started to be able to discuss district-related issues with the three towns and the district. And I would like for us to invite the opportunity to have the school district included in the rotation of the meetings. For a couple of reasons. One is we're four independent boards and I think it would be good for you folks to come to the district offices. You likely don't get there. Might be good for you to see what's going on. And not that I need to put a carrot out there, but I think our food is almost better than yours. So I can assure. You know what? I think it's lovely and it's a lovely gesture.
It was threatened, Lorraine, to have it at the International. Is that true?
Absolutely not. I can't afford that. We don't have the budget for that. Sorry. So I'd like to, if, if you are amenable, to include the district in the rotation of the meetings.
I was disappointed. I thought you were gonna say heaven on Martha's Vineyard or something.
Again, we do not have the budget for that.
So every fourth meeting would be there?
Sure. I mean, you could do it every fourth or to make it easier for everyone, you could do, because I know we do Bolton, Lancaster, Stowe. We just go down 117. It's up to you if you want to do one in the middle so that the Stowe people and the Lancaster people, you know, midway through can come to us. I don't care when, when it is. Because if we did Bolton, Lancaster, Stowe, and the district, you'd be in Bolton twice. Actually, that would work.
That works well.
That works great, yeah.
So it'd be at Amerson?
Yes, in the district offices, yeah.
You could even have it next month.
We could have it next month.
You might talk.
But then we'd be bumping Lancaster.
No, we'd be bumping Stowe.
Oh, we'd be bumping Stowe.
It goes, it goes west to east and then reverses.
Would you like to host next month as you were?
Well, let's come to a decision. I think, I don't see any.
I don't have a possible.
I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Great. So when do you want to do it?
Let's keep it.
You could surprise us.
Well, maybe, even though it's not an agenda item, it's an implied one, what's gonna be the date of our next meeting? That might have some impact. We're just getting geared up now.
And one more question, Lorraine. Will the doors be open?
Yes, they will. If it's after six, the doors will be open.
You know, I'd like to throw the conversation, just to make this more confusing, is it'd be nice if we get our new town offices run away in December, to have it in Lancaster for December. So if you can work those two meetings before that.
Oh, that's good.
Get us just to showcase the new.
In October in Stowe and November at the school district.
Yeah, that's what's, whatever works in that, just to.
Well, it's assuming we're going, I guess we always said that during the school year, we try to set a template date for each month. There are times when I might have suggested, even though it's been since April, that an agenda of such limited magnitude as this one, not to demean it or discuss it, but it might have been carried on to another. I mean, that's not the fault of anybody. Frequently, the way this is loosey-goosey, the secretary of whichever board is hosting it puts out a call that anybody won't talk about anything. If nobody does, then we don't need a meeting. So I think any meeting, I would say, is subject to, we're not gonna get around and just say, gee, I like the color of your slacks, Lorraine. Although I do. But, you know, it doesn't make sense to have a meeting about when we meet next and that's pretty much it.
Tentatively, the next meeting would be mostly October 4th. It would be the first Wednesday if the school committee doesn't have a meeting that night.
We have one on the 13th and 27th, so now.
We don't.
Right. Thank you.
So October 4th will be at the school district?
Or Stowe, whichever.
No, what? You should do it that way.
Do it in, we do it in the district? Okay.
Yeah, across the street.
Thank you. It's gonna be.
October 4th.
So that means we take, we take grabbing agenda items and.
And might I suggest that it's such a radical change in our, in our cement feat.
Pages go.
We don't wait until a week before to tell people. You might stir some interest in coming. You get an early announcement, old date and new location.
Should we plan a couple of months beyond that too? Rather than doing it meeting to meeting or is that helpful with schedule?
Well, if we're saying Lancaster is in December.
No, Stowe is next. That's at the school district.
Yes, but the school is, the school is in October. Stowe's in November. Lancaster wants us there in December.
I concur. I'm looking for the dates within each one of those months. Is it always the first Wednesday?
The goal is always the first Wednesday.
It doesn't always work that way, but it's the goal.
Do you happen to have November the first? Just like to press some updates down here.
November 1st is always.
November 1, yeah.
And to Don's point, you know, and we proved it tonight, if there's not enough for an agenda in October, then the district would still host, we wouldn't be until November. I mean, we were, we were tentative hosts for months in a row, so.
Yeah, that's the way it works. It just, it just rides until the next meeting and then.
Don, what's your December, please?
December, it would be, if we went with the first, it would be December 6th.
And November 1.
No, and we're, we're at a conference, so we would have to do November 8th. The district, most of the school committee wouldn't be available.
That's a school committee meeting.
Oh, that's a school committee meeting, so we can't even do it the 8th. And they're not wanting, you guys don't want to be on the 15th. Well, you could be on the 15th.
Well, there's, there's times when we don't, we skip a month too. Then also.
To be determined.
Yeah, that's the easiest before.
To be determined at the National.
We're gonna do each meeting. Each meeting? So we'll take October 4th and thank you all. Appreciate that.
That's why it appears, right?
It is and I'll, and we'll put together, you know, and, you know, information to tell you where to go, how to get there. We won't tell you what's on the menu though.
It's also gonna go.
Well, in a nice way.
With directions.
With directions.
Do we need a motion with that?
No, I think normally it's just a, it's just an agreement.
Great. So are there any town announcements?
No, just kind of what I alluded to earlier. We're hoping that our, I think we'll be open by December. It's on schedule, within budget and it should be a nice, nice change from where we are. Most of you folks have attended the one down at the community center. Other than the pound of basketballs and the screaming of children and, yeah, you have the feet, it's okay, but it'll look a bit better. It'll be the top floor of the new building, the third floor. Accessibility will be there, elevator. It should be very nice. We'll, we'll see. I don't remember anything else.
I have a, it's a future agenda request because it didn't make this one in time, but on Facebook and Bolton Community Site, over the last four or five days, topic of the traffic flow of the high school came up and it generated about 150 comments on there, which is pretty active for the, for the particular page. And one of the things, they were asking a lot of questions that we were dealing with last fall when I think Selectman Keep had asked for a meeting at the high school. One of the things that I had told the people that were on there that I would request that maybe we can get this on the agenda to discuss sort of what happened at that meeting because people were asking questions. So if we have like, you know, if we're able to get like minutes or action items and what's been done, what kind of came out of that meeting and so forth, that we can actually, you know, make public, I think that would help a lot of people that seem to have a lot of concern, of people writing out comments of robbery or whatnot, obviously, because the traffic is still crazy fast out there. And it's this fine dance that people are doing, going in and out of all these side roads and everything. So we're just waiting for the tragedy to happen.
Was there any remediation to whatsoever? We had a meeting last summer and there was ideas of light in line of sight, putting up signs, increasing maybe breakdown length.
I could, I could give a very brief update. As far as line of sight and signage, we did do that. We trimmed back, as you come out of Green Road, we trimmed back to the left or the eastbound side. We cut back significantly on that. We did put up the extra signage that we said we would do, so we did that last fall. One update that I was going to give anyway, because I do know that there was some erroneous information posted in social media relative to the proposed safety zone for the high school. I had worked with DOT, they committed to, to provide us with engineering plans, which were the engineering plans that they used for Tejantou, but modified to fit our, our elevations out here. So they came out and shot elevations and so forth, updated the plans, gave them to us. They committed to creating some of the, if we need specific signs, they would create the signs in their shop. The, all the equipment that we need to make the safety zone happen is on order. We have figured out how to power the signs and is, it's my hope, I don't have all the delivery information confirmed yet, but it's my hope that we will have that up and running in October. So it's not that the town is doing nothing. The town is doing quite a bit, actually. Some people have made assumptions that we're not doing anything. And very quickly, there was a meeting on Complete Streets and I'm looking into what Complete Streets is all about. It's a state level program and we're looking at doing some improvements through grant funds that can be gotten through the program. We had a meeting last week. I attended, Jonathan attended, as did many members of our Public Way Safety Committee, as did our Chief of Police, as did our Town Planner, quite a few people at the meeting. And there is. And there, there is an idea that we're discussing, a concept, I guess is a better word right now, to erect something that would simulate a mini roundabout at that location, at Green and Forbish Mill, have it there for about two weeks and see how that works. So it's a very, very much in the preliminary stages. It may not happen at all, but it's a concept that we're discussing. We would certainly, at the appropriate times, work with the, with the school district and talk about impact to, whether it's buses, traffic flow from the school, whatever. So there's a lot of ground to cover, but again, that is something that we're looking at, it's something we're considering. Testing if it works, you know, it's, it's possible that the selectmen could pursue engineering funds to get that designed, because obviously all the design work would have to be done before anything else is done. So it, again, it's on the town's radar screen. It absolutely is.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that, that intersection has, is, has been a priority in all the reports written about 117. And I think I can say for the, the subcommittee that's working on Complete Streets, you know, the members agreed that, you know, confirmed that it was the most dangerous intersection and a priority in town.
It's a little of a public interest that's in this and I think if you guys are able to bring some of that forward to the public, that would help you guys out a lot and ensure it would help lots.
This came up after the three-car accident Friday?
It actually, ironically, it came up just before the three-car accident that happened out there on Friday.
Was that during school hours or...
I believe it was right after school.
We're very careful to not get premature information out. We don't want to, we don't want to have it reported incorrectly and set improper expectations. We want to manage the message. We want to be ahead of the game and make sure that we've got the right story to tell. So that's why, you know, we don't normally talk about very preliminary things in public because things can change, but people hear the first message and, and expectations can be misset.
That's it. Other news since we met much, one of the times that we had a meeting in Stowe suggests maybe we could have it in our new community center, which is an open within the rest. Well, it's really in full swing now, but it's just since the spring. And this was where we took the no longer needed Pompositican School. And after a lot of deliberation, whether we, all the way from demolishing it, selling it, warehousing it, it is now functioning as a combination community center and fire station. One of only two in the, in New England that our fire chief was able to find, where you had those combinations. And some of us, when that, when that idea was first floated, kind of had the idea of, of elderly folks on walkers dodging fire trucks and it didn't seem to be compatible. But in fact, point of fact, it, that's not the case. You don't even know there's a fire station there unless, unless the alarm goes off.
You don't have fires in Stowe yet?
Lots of ambulance runs. But it's, it's a remarkable facility. It's, those of you who weren't familiar with Pompositican, it was an open classroom concept, which was back in the 50s, I guess, was the, the new wave and it just new workers. My daughter went there, was awful, just cockroaches all the time. But for renovation purposes, it was wonderful. The only, because you didn't have the T L in the interior. We had to put in some new steel in the back to make a high vase for the fire engine, fire department. And I think it would be, we could arrange a little, you know, perhaps a tour, a little before or after the meeting or something, show what you can do with some innovation. We would have spent $10 million on a fire station alone on the present site and it would have been cramped. We spent under $10 million to do the whole thing. And we have communities, the council on aging, recreation department, school nurse, I mean, the town nurse, part-time, the food, the food pantry, separate entrance in the back for privacy. It's, it's really, it's a nice facility. So you'd like to shove it off.
Yeah, I'd love to see that. See you in the slide. Thank you.
Nothing else I'd move toward sharing.
Second.
Executive session.